Chairman, it's after six o'clock. One second, Steve returns in here. We are live.
All right, at this time at six o'clock, I'd like to call the committee of the whole together. Please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please. Mr. McGawlin, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Martin? Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Rob, here. Okay, please, we're going to discuss about issues concerning a possible safety service level issue. Do you want us to read this before it gets started, or?
Yeah, those are some talking points, I'm happy to go over them. I can get a read my whole email there.
Well, then it's in the record.
Sounds good.
Go ahead, Mr. Crowe.
May I borrow your copy for a second? I know there's eight copies in here, but I've not been well today. I'll move on in a second. Thank you. Okay, this is an email that I sent out this afternoon with just some talking points to discuss our situation with the expenses at the fire department, particularly with EMS and potential options for fundraising to pay the expenses. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll bring a copy of this. I will bring a copy of this to council, as it's doubtful you'll have time to read it through email. I wanted to get this to you earlier and the financials, but I've been under the weather. But this at least gives us some talking points. These are just my thoughts. Mike, Steve, and Amber probably all have some great input that may expand or potentially contradict my goal of notes. When we took over EMS services last fall, we hired three new employees. As you all know, staffing is expensive. We used to consider the cost of an employee, including benefits, to be $100,000. With rising costs in almost every aspect, it is now probably more realistic to consider the cost of each firefighter at $125,000 annual. Then, of course, we added an ambulance and the associated equipment, supplies, and maintenance costs. We'll probably end up doing something with an expansion of living quarters in the fire station. Long story short, our operating costs have increased greatly. The financials are already pretty tight, so I do believe this is putting the general fund in a squeeze. We have seen an increase in revenue as part of acquiring the EMS services. We anticipated receiving $350,000 a year by billing soft costs, which is just whatever the insurance company is willing to pay. Our runs are well below projections this year, so we're probably looking at receiving more like $250,000 to $300,000. Currently, these funds are going into the general fund to help offset the increased costs. As these are certainly below our actual costs, I would suggest looking into options to raise an additional $500,000. It was brought up the finance committee, in the finance committee meeting, as well as with the administration, as to whether, assuming we look into a tax levy, this should be a safety service levy or just a fire levy. Mr. Gates mentioned that the health department, fire department, and police department would be included in a safety services levy. Our health department is healthy financially, no pun intended. So I don't think we need to raise more funds for that department. While our police department is also seeing some financial strains, I feel if we are able to reduce the burden on the general fund from the fire department expenses, we could continue to operate the police department without additional funding. I also feel that is a more direct reason for the voters to fund a fire levy. The fire department absorbed a public service that was very expensive, as anyone who needed an ambulance can attest. So it only makes sense that it would need tax revenue to offset those expenses. The next question is how to raise these funds. Our first option would be to issue a property tax. I've been in contact with the county auditor who gave me the cost per household to raise $500,000. I will bring those this evening, I have those with me, I can discuss those momentarily. If we were going with a property tax levy, this would be paid by everyone who owns property in town, which would include the senior citizens who probably, and I haven't researched this, use the services more than some other demographics. As home values are fairly steady, I feel this would also be the most consistent revenue stream. Personally, I lean toward that approach.
What do you mean by this? As home values are fairly steady, I feel this would be the most consistent revenue stream?
Well, you know, with the fluctuation of our income tax, I guess that's what I should relate it to. You know, our income tax has changed substantially last year, went way up, whereas this year it's probably going to drop back down. You know, the, and I will give you that, yes, property taxes have really gone, or property values have gone up. But our revenue stream has just seen slight increases over the last, well, that I've been here. So I just felt that it would be a little more.
Consistent.
Consistent, thank you. I can certainly research that further. But, yeah, so it's definitely been more consistent than our income tax, which has gone all over the place in the last three years, where we've just seen small gains in property taxes.
I want to come back to that point, but let's go on.
Our second option is to propose an income tax levy. I will bring that percentage to you tonight as well. This method might be more popular with voters, especially retired voters, as it would be a tax on earned income, including wages from workers who don't live in town, therefore they can't vote on it. I think this revenue could fluctuate more than property tax revenue, particularly if a major employer has a really good year, or why he can consider it, leaves town. While this should really be a determining factor, it would involve an increase in administrative costs among not only the city, but also business, HR departments, tax preparers, and software companies to make the rate change. If we choose not to do a tax levy, or if by some reason it would not pass, my suggestion would be to do hard billing. This would involve charging users the difference between the total cost of transport and the amount the insurance pays. On a side note, that's how the previous service did things. This is certainly not ideal, as it would be a burden on our billing department and would potentially upset citizens who have used these services. It may also result in people refusing service that they should accept due to the cost. The one area that this would be most fair is if someone who is not a resident or an employee in the town uses the services. In this case, they would pay the full cost instead of being supplemented by our residents. I hope that these are a good starting point to our discussion of these things. Sincerely, Brian.
Question.
I had shared at the finance committee, drawing from my experience when I was at the board of elections, and the pass rate, both, most of them are renewals, but the pass rate for fire levies on the ballot is very high. One would be foolish in many cases, particularly when you think about our rural volunteer departments. A person would be foolish to vote against a fire levy. I use the metaphor, mom, flag, apple pie, and fire levies. You know, if you're against your fire levy, you're probably against mom, flag, and apple pie as well. Where I'm going is, and this is no one's fault, but the reason we're having this discussion is because of the situation that was forced upon us in the fire department last year. So, you know, if we go to the ballot, either through real estate or income tax, I think it should be for the fire, for the fire department. As the finance director mentioned in his letter, if we have additional revenues designated to the fire, that relieves any pressure on the police department, because it shifts some of the expenses from the general fund now to this fire fund, I suppose we would call it. And, you know, the police department would benefit from a fire levy, because there's that less pressure, less competition for dollars in the general fund.
I certainly agree with that, and I think it's, I think Brian's points are well brought up in that. The main reason we're doing this, well, we've been talking about doing something similar to this for years, but the main reason we are doing it and considering it wholly right now is certainly because of the situation that was thrust upon us. We have always, to everyone's credit involved, tried to provide the best possible services available. And this is no different. You know, we're not trying to cut corners, we're not trying to do some hard billing. You know, we're trying to provide a legitimate service to the people of Shelby and surrounding communities. And I think soft billing is a part of that. And I think that when, you know, when inevitably we have to go to the voters with something, I assume that's, we'll bring them something, whether income tax, property tax, being able to say, part of the services is for soft billing. And anybody who's dealt with insurance companies knows that you generally get two different pieces of paper, right? You get an explanation of benefits, which is telling you why they wouldn't pay. And then you get a letter from the hospital saying, well, they didn't pay, so you have to. And for transport services, those bills can be rather pricey. Having had a child have to get transported nationwide, children's, seen what those kind of bills can run. Fortunately, you know, we were able to be covered in that regard, but I can't imagine if someone's, you know, supplementing their insurance, especially the elderly population, having to deal with that. Which, I guess was a nice segue there, I do think the most fair option before us would be a property tax. I do think it is more, it is more consistent. We won't have to necessarily worry about if we're hitting that $100,000 or not. And I think that the population that's going to likely reap the benefits of this the most, especially in soft billing, will be somewhere elderly population. So I think that that's where I'm leaning, is towards a property tax. But to the point we're discussing, I do think we need to call it a fire levy. I think that's appropriate, as the totality of the funds are going to go to the fire in the current situation that we're in.
Nathan, you said it's the most fair. How, why do you say that? What are your facts that prove that?
So, in general, we're talking about the equity and fairness of property tax versus income tax. Income tax is those who are earning income, right? So things that would naturally benefit those who are out and about and earning income, I think it's more fair and equitable to put under an income tax, especially considering that income tax does affect those who don't leave and live within the city. But, you know, that's a whole nother thing. But the argument being is that it's supporting the city services for women that are at work, right? And so I certainly feel that, you know, infrastructure projects, I feel that are equitable in that regard. Additional, additional infrastructure projects, I think that even if we were to do a safety services levy at large, you know, one could definitely argue that, you know, having police and safety services for people who are working, et cetera. But in this regard, considering the clientele that is more likely to use a service, especially as we have an aging population, I just think that a lot of the arguments that would preclude us using a property tax, affecting those on fixed incomes more, et cetera, I just feel there are also the populations that are more likely to benefit from the service and therefore probably should burden, share in the burden of that service. That's my thinking.
Thanks for that, I'm not sold on your argument. You know, I look around this room and I see but one person here who's, I wasn't going to say aged, but older than me, and I, you know, I qualify as a senior citizen. Now, I'm not going to play the senior citizen card, because my wife and I have no such issues. But to put additional tax burden on some people who are least able to pay that is unfair. But the finance director has some numbers for us, let's see those numbers.
Okay. Property tax wise, the county auditor's office told me that a 3.8 mil levy would raise $500,000. That would come out to $133 per $100,000 of home value for the residents.
Per year?
Per year. Equivalent, the equivalent, if we had a quarter percent income tax rate increase, that would raise about the same amount of money.
What was that, sorry, I missed that?
A quarter percent, and that would obviously cost $250 for every $100,000 of income. Mr. Gates had asked me to compile a list of area income tax rates. And I sent the list over this, like, an hour ago. I apologize, I was in bed for about two days here this weekend, it was a little rough. And so the list, you know, I didn't print the entire thing, because it was 22 pages, and I figured I can get you guys a more compressed list. A few of the notables, a few sirens, I've got a 2%, Ashland is 2%.
Slow down.
I apologize.
Okay.
There's some other local.
What's Mansfield?
Mansfield is... There's a lot of cities in Ohio. Mansfield is 2%.
Galleon?
Galleon is... 2%. Press Line is 2%.
Mount Galleon?
Mount Galleon is 1.25%.
Willard?
Willard is... Here's 1.38%.
Are these just fire levies, or are these also?
This is their total income tax, so we are at 1.5 right now. So, you know, you get into the big cities and they're all 2.5%.
Mount Vernon?
Mount Vernon is... They are 2%.
Norwalk?
Norwalk is 1.5%.
W? Okay, well, yeah.
At some point, you'll have to explain that term to people.
Looks like W is 2%. The one thing that does kind of mix in with the income tax is, obviously it's not really our purview, but, you know, school district tax kind of plays into things as well, whereas, you know, we have a 1.5 income tax here, but then the school district is another 1%. So, you know, like, okay, while Columbus's rate is 2.5%, they don't have a school district tax there. And so I guess that's something to be wary of, even though it, you know, has nothing to do with us, but just divert it on our taxpayers.
There is one other benefit of going to a property tax versus income tax, and of course, this is down the road, but the language that's on the ballot for the renewal of a property tax explicitly states renewal. Versus for a income tax, it is not stated in the header, and the language is continuation. And so if someone is looking at the ballot and they're not paying attention to the continuation, they could assume it's a new tax all over again. And that, of course, does hurt your renewal rates, or could potentially hurt your rates. Now, it's a fire levy, so I'm not, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the most of concern, but it is something to mention of, you know, why would we maybe want to go with one or the other?
Let's talk a little bit about Title 57, the Revised Code of Tax Levy Law. And what, what happens with voted millage? The other thing, the question I had for the finance director, this half million dollars, is that net or gross? Because the county gets a cut for collecting it on our behalf. So that's something to find out. And the quickest person to call is the county attorney. Anyways, let's say, you know, we go for a tax, real estate tax, people vote for it. Let's say it brings in a half million dollars that first year. It will never bring in more than a half million dollars, because the law requires that when property values go up in a subdivision, the effective tax rate is reduced so that it never brings in more than it did that very first year. So subdivisions in Ohio can't benefit from inflation on their real estate values. Now, unvoted millage, like what we have, the two mils for the general fund, the three tens each for police and fire pension, those are inside millages, those do benefit from inflation. But, you know, this half million dollars is frozen, at least for five years. Now, if you put it on as just a plain renewal, it still stays at that, at that half million dollars. Now, you can do a replacement levy, which then kicks in whatever that millage, that 3.8 mils, at the current value. But that, in fact, is a tax increase. Now, you know, we're going to go on the ballot for five years, because that's what fire levies are for. I won't even ask the chief if he can guarantee us that those costs won't increase during that five years, because he can't. And then if you go, if you renew it for another five years, on and on, you can see where I go. So with the real estate tax, we're locked in to whatever it brings in the first year, even though we know that, you know, the past few years, what real estate has done. On the other hand, while there's been some fluctuation over three years, which is a very small timeframe, I would like to see what income tax revenues have been for the past 10 years. Then we have a better idea. You know, we had an exceptional year last year. You know, let's, let's make the mountains lower and raise up the valleys. But there we can have a better idea of what this quarter percent may bring in. We may be able to do some projections, and we'll make conservative projections as to what the trend is in income tax. That's, that's what I see as one of the big benefits of going the income tax route is, as people's incomes grow, the revenue grows as well. Because we know that costs aren't going to be locked in.
But in this case, because of the particular service, they don't necessarily need to be locked in, because we're going to still be doing soft billing, and soft billing is still going to increase over time. So your soft billing is going to account for the inflationary pressures on the cost. The, this is really providing the gap for the things that aren't necessarily going to jump as much and often, and that would be wages, right? So, you know, it's taken us how long to move from $100,000 to $125,000 for a projection for a employee? You know, that's going to, that's going to be a much smoother slope than it is for, you know, products and different services that are, different items that we have to have in an ambulance. But that's going to be covered by, those increases are going to be naturally covered by your soft billing increases.
Well, I hope, I wish I were as confident as you are about that, because already we've heard from the chief this year that his thoughts about what soft billing would do are dropping, and dropping significantly. You know, it's all based on the number of runs. And, you know, I know we don't live in a perfect world, but in a perfect world, all the equipment would stay in the department all the time. You know, to make, to make revenue projections on something over which we have practically no control, it's like rolling the dice. I'm not a gambling man.
Chief, as we were discussing, if there's anything you want to add, come on up to the podium.
With the counsel, we get sale, our runs are down, I just figured it out today. In 2022, we average at this point 173.5 runs per month, and right now, we're averaging 138. 55, and that's all runs. If you figure we go about 55.2% of the time, as with just, we've only got six months of data, so where we've been transporting, we transport someone to the hospital. So just with those runs being down that far, that's $76,000 that tends to be coming back. And I've got, hey, but I've got the data here, it can give it to you, whatever, just let me know. It's, it's definitely, it's tight for us. I don't want us to sound wrong way, but, you know, business unexplainably has been down for us, which is a good thing.
Your fire protection program is working, right?
Education's doing well. You know, it's a good thing, but also something we didn't plan on. You know, we know it's going to be tight, you know, with what we're going to make. With, over the first four months, I just figured it out today, our profit, what we, and our revenue was 101,512.01. So that puts us just over $300,000. You add that 76 to it, we're over what we projected. So, I don't know, it's, it's picking up, it's getting, we're picking the pace up. We've been getting a lot more calls, so I foresee us being right where we thought we would be, or pretty close.
What departments, if any, around here do hard billing?
Private ambulances?
No, departments, fire departments. No, departments, fire departments.
None that I know of.
To go to hard billing, what would we have to do?
Well, first of all, you probably can lay into this better because we passed out of what was reasonable, kind of what the accepted rate was, that would have to be changed. Because we would be going above what the accepted rate was, whatever, you know, the, the, knowing says, hey, this is what everybody, this is what you can get. You're probably looking at costs with a collections company going after and getting, what was that?
Well, that's even before we send out the, you're gonna.
Yeah, it's.
That's assuming people are gonna pay.
I'll tell you what, the, towards the end of private ambulance service, the phone calls I was getting daily on the amounts they were charging some and just taking it pretty bad of, all I can do is give you the, and me personally calling and trying to get them to reduce some of the rates when they're charging, you know, they were charging 1500 to 1900 for refusal. And I was like, come on, that's, you took blood pressure, took basic set of vitals, you're charging that? So now, I'm not saying that's what we would do. I would be totally against that, but it's just, there's no one, there's no one that I can name that can hard bill. Some of them have different rates for residents or residents of the district and people outside of the district. That's one thing we can look at. You know, and that's one thing, you know, we could, you know, we can look at, we had enough issues just picking up and taking off on our own. There was bigger fish to fry, so to say. Now we can start working on some other avenues. You know, I've seen a few women make a phone call about that and see about, you know, what we can get for people, you know, outside of the district as opposed to inside the district, kind of look at some things there.
Of course, all this is based on an assumption that we put a levy on the ballot and fails. I don't wanna spend too much time on that. But my guess would be is that if we went to hard billing, we would need to hire a person in the fire department whose sole job is to do billing.
Yes, it's good to be a master.
And then somehow we would have to be certified or approved by insurance companies.
And, you know, the reason we have a billing company.
So we don't have to do that.
Well, yeah, and they said with the amount of runs, even will be, even that, the amount of runs we do and the ever-changing Medicare Medicaid laws, I said, you would be, you'd be behind by kind of eight, some trim.
Oh, I'm sure.
There are always, I don't know of anybody that does, I think, then Ashland may do their own, may have someone that does her billing, but other than that, it's all, I don't know of anybody that does it around. It's all shut down.
They farm it out. Well, if you'll check into Ashland, that's, that's.
I can check in. Don't quote me on that.
Turn to this lady beside you and say, don't quote me.
No, we're, she's all right. She's never done me wrong, so.
There are companies that do medical billing, right?
Yeah.
They typically charge a percentage of what they collect. So if push comes to shove, we could get a company outside the fire department to do the billing and make, and do the collections or.
Or companies outside.
I have no idea what the percentage would be right now, but.
Big three percent, right around there. Three, roughly three percent would be it.
And what they don't collect, they sell off to a collection agency, which everybody knows what they're like, so. I agree. I wouldn't wanna see that happen, but there are options under, under that option that the city could take.
Yeah. If you look, the year-end report I gave, I think I've got the last 12 years. And other than a couple of minor blips in a year, it's going up. Are we gonna have a flip? Maybe, kind of, to your point, we've never had anything pre-arranged yet, so they come to us. I think that, you know, even if we saw it down here this year, we're gonna keep, it just keeps going up. It keeps going up and going up. The other thing is it's getting harder and harder and harder to find volunteers that are staying and committing to us. That's becoming a real struggle. So there's, you know, there's a lot of things to this, you know, facets to it, and housing and everything else. So I appreciate all the work Brian's done with this. Any questions? I mean, my door is always open. Call me, email me, whatever, stop in. Be happy to discuss it with you and.
But did I understand you say though, even with these, the low number of runs, the projection that you're saying as of today still would be around 300,000 per year?
This, it is about, yeah. Because there's a lot of stuff that's still pending. It seems like a car wreck or something goes into litigation. Who knows when we get, you know, when we get the money out of that. Depends, wasn't a lot of Medicare Medicaid, wasn't a lot of insurance that went through. It depends. Just with the date, I just ran our revenues and like I said, I've got it right here. And just took a four, a four-month average and it was 101,512.01. So if you figure we're about third of the way through the year, so we are, that's $300,000. And you add up those runs that we're behind, we're over what we projected. But it's, you know, valid point, so we don't walk around on business that finds us. So it's... There's a million different ways you can look at it, you know, Brian's job is kind of looking, you know, keep it sort of conservative and, you know, I'm looking, I'm trying to be just realistic, you know, even realistic, yeah, we're cutting close anyhow with the add-on that manpower, but the manpower added has been a godsend. Another thing that kind of shocked me, we started to track double runs and full responses. Full response, everybody's out of the fire department, double runs, we got two on at once, two things going on. So we have one person left. And I think that 20% of the time, we either had a full response out or double runs going at once. And then you think about if it takes someone a minute to go, that's shooting an hour at least. There's quite a few people that go to the VDA for the, you know, for the doctor, that's time out of Shelby. So keeping that up, you know, that's, that's my big concern.
I'm just trying to read the room. I don't, is, I mean, is there anybody who's opposed to doing a levy of some sort? You know, I have heard an argument against that, so I guess the, you know, if we're all kind of in agreement that this is necessary and we need to do it, I mean, is there anybody who's opposed to calling it strictly a fire levy?
I'm not all opposed to that, but since we haven't decided on that yet, I would like to see if Chief Combs has anything to say about it.
Nope. Not unless there's a specific question, I don't. To me, it makes sense, but I don't have anything specific.
Just wanna make sure we're not stepping on toes.
Yeah, I would agree with the statement made earlier that, you know, any, anything you do for the fire department is gonna have a direct effect on the police department and it's gonna be positive. And you take the pressure off the general fund as far as the fire department is concerned, it is directly gonna benefit the police department. It's just common sense. And if the roles were reversed, it would, it would be the same. I mean, service is a service and if you have more available for one, the other naturally is going to have.
So if we're all in agreement on those two things, I guess the point of contention, maybe not contention, but the, I guess the decision is property versus income tax. So we've heard from Mr. Gates and myself on our opinions on that, but I'm definitely interested in hearing y'all's opinion on where we are, where you are in relation to that.
I would agree with Councilman Gates as far as the income tax versus the property tax, that, you know, why put the burden on the people that are gonna be marked burdened by it? I think an income tax in this case would be the fairest way to go with it.
I agree with that.
And I'll agree with that as well.
And then I'm just looking at the, you know, we're at 1.5 now, if we add a quarter, and we're still under. We can't worry about what the schools do, but we're still under a lot of other suits. I'd still like to see the 10-year figures. And I want to know also, if we go to real estate, is this a net or a gross figure? Trying to think what subdivision it was that went on the ballot and lo and behold, hmm, you know, you know, the county kept its share because the county is acting as our agent in collecting the taxes. So, you know, the labor is worth is higher. So I think it's 2% that the Treasurers Department gets the key, which, you know, when I think about what other professionals get, 2% is a pretty cheap cut. But I want to know that specifically.
Can, Brian, you obviously suggested the 500,000 number. Can you, where did that specific number come from?
That is a good question. You know, it's, it's all a guessing game, a little bit. Because it's, you know, obviously, we, especially with income tax, if we have a really good year, we could make one more than that and we won't need any, we're doing that much. And, you know, if, as Chief talked about runs, you know, there can easily be a $50,000 difference between our projections and what actually happens. So I was kind of looking at, okay, well, our projections will probably cover about two-thirds of our, of our new hires. You know, if those guys are costing us 375, maybe this brings in 300, so we're 75,000 short there. Obviously, we managed to pay for the new ambulance, so we're okay for the time being until, you know, maintenance costs on our other ambulances start really kicking up. And of course, supplies, we're kind of lucky in that we're getting those covered right now. But I don't know if that'll stay on. And then, of course, there's the fire station situation and if we have to get a bond to itself, paying that back. And so I honestly, I really, there's, there's a lot in the air and I can, I can really run some hard numbers and try to get a more exact number. You know, I, based on my calculations so far, I thought 500 was a safe number to cut the edge off. But I can certainly add that to my to-do list and get some projected.
That's a good, good, mid-range number. 568,000.
That's right, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I think probably the question in Councilman Mark's mind is, you know, is, would, would that 25%, 0.25 be optimal? Would 0.20 do it and still it wouldn't be hurting three years from now? I think that's part of projections. And there's another, oh, yield to Councilman Gates. You know, when you roll this out, you know, I figured you'd need to describe what this purpose is. Personnel and operations, personnel operations, building, maintenance, whatever. I think, I think it's not the language on the ballot that helps to know what it's going towards. So it's not, as I'm understanding, it's not purely personnel or associated costs or how do you describe that?
It's whatever ordinance we bring in will say, you know, you know. I don't know if you can be so vague on the ballot to say including but not limited to personnel, equipment, maintenance.
But in some form or fashion, I think, you know, we give that information to the voter.
Right.
For exactly what these dollars would be spent on.
I, one thing, and I don't want to step on Chief Thompson's toes, but I did want to bring up a point. So soft billing has been going on for a while. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that that soft billing money originally went into the equipment fund at the fire department. Due to the increased run numbers and adding EMS and adding employees, finances had to take all of that soft billing money and move it over into the personnel side. There's no way that you can continue to run, to increase services and not need money for equipment. So that soft bill money, that money would have to, they're gonna need more equipment, so that can't continue to go into that personnel side. And I don't know if the chief wants to talk about that, but my only concern is right now you're getting some of those supplies paid for. If that ends and you have zero in that equipment fund or net zero because of one personnel cost, that also does create money back to the fire department to make sure that they're replacing equipment appropriately. So I just didn't want that to be lost.
Hence, hence the higher number of property recommended by the finance director.
Well, we know we're gonna have, ambulances don't run forever. And we know that buildings don't last forever and, you know, so it's all part of it.
I'm gonna suggest that we do this again in two weeks prior to the next Councilman. It seems to have been a, as far as I'm concerned, a good use of our time. We gotta be here at seven.
I agree.
That will be May 15.
Fifteenth.
At six o'clock.